Okay, we've got six o'clock already, no? All right. We'll go ahead and call this meeting in order to the Board of Commissioners as governing body of Clatsop County at county service districts for which it so acts and as the Clatsop County Local Contract Review Board is now meeting in regular session. All rise for the flag. Salute.
And Clerk of the Board, can we have the roll call?
Chair Clela.
Here.
Vice Chair Bang.
Here.
Commissioner Toyoka.
Here.
Commissioner Webb.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
I'm here.
Thank you, Teresa. So, we had an opportunity to review the agenda during our work session. We do have an amendment to the agenda. We're going to be adding an item, which is the State Homeland Security Program Grant Amendment 20-207-1 to the consent calendar.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Move and second to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. First item is a proclamation, and this is for Sexual Assault Awareness Action Month. And can I have Tess Witnick and Tammy Rosales come and present on this? Welcome.
My name is Tess Witnick, and my pronouns are she and her. And The Harbor is Clatsop County's only advocacy center, shelter, and prevention education provider for domestic and sexual violence. When most people think of The Harbor, they automatically think of domestic violence shelter for women, but we provide much more than that. In the same way, when most people think about sexual assault, they think about a stranger lurking in the alleyway at night. The reality is that eight out of 10 sexual assaults are perpetrated by someone known to the survivor. The people experiencing sexual violence are our neighbors, our friends, our family members, and our coworkers. The people who are perpetrating sexual violence are also our neighbors, our friends, our family, and our coworkers. When The Harbor surveyed Clatsop County sexual assault survivors to ask why they didn't seek medical care, resources, or support following their assault, 84% stated that the stigma and shame associated with sexual assault in our community caused them to stay silent and not get the help they needed. That is why proclamations like these are so important. We need to continue to raise awareness about the prevalence of sexual assault to take action to end rape culture in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tess, and thank you, Tammy, for presenting that message and representing The Harbor. Thank you for being here this evening. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution in order proclaiming April 2023 Sexual Assault Awareness Action Month, and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation.
I'd like to second that. And if I could make a comment, Mr. Chair?
You may.
I really appreciate that you're coming here tonight to empower us and to empower everyone associated with this. At the Association of Oregon Counties, we were having a discussion on gun control legislation, and a county commissioner came out to us as a sexual assault survivor. I think that's a watershed moment because the shame and the silence have to be broken by everyone for whom this is an issue, and that's all of us, but particularly for the victims of sexual assault. And I want you to know that your message is heard, and people are stepping up to give voice rather than to hide in silence and shame. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Agreed. Been moved and approved, or moved and seconded to approve the resolution in order proclaiming April 2023 Sexual Assault Awareness Action Month, and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming April 1st, 2023 through April 30th, 2023 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Action Month, whereas sexual assault affects Oregonians every day, whether as a victim or survivor, or as a family member, friend, partner, neighbor, employer, or coworker of a survivor, and whereas Oregonians of all gender identities experience sexual violence, including an estimated one in four adult women who has been the victim of a rape, and nearly one in five men who has experienced sexual violence in their lifetime, and whereas one in 10 Clatsop County middle and high school students report inappropriate sexual contact by an adult before they turn 18, and whereas certain populations in Oregon experience much higher rates of sexual violence due to systemic oppression and inequity, and whereas out of 1,000 sexual assaults, only 25 perpetrators will face any legal repercussions for the assault, whereas sexual violence is preventable, and all communities are strengthened by encouraging healthy, nonviolent interactions, relationships, and social norms, and whereas every individual and community in Oregon have a, has a role to play to help eliminate sexual violence by working together to promote social change. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Clatsop County, and calls upon all community members and local agencies to speak out against sexual violence, educate one another on sexual violence prevention, and support survivors dated this 12th day of April 2023. Thank you very much for being here. Next is business from the public. So, this is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda, except for public hearings, or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public signed up to speak remotely?
No, Chair Clela.
Okay. I do have Rick Bowers, who has signed up to speak in person, so Rick, if you can come up and just give your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Rick Bowers, 357 Commercial Street here in Astoria. I want to share some information about adverse childhood experiences, or the ACEs Score. This is the result of the CDC and Kaiser study trying to figure out what impacts our long-term health. There is a short quiz that asks participants whether they have experienced any of about 10 different categories of traumas as children. These include physical, sexual, or verbal abuse, physical or emotional neglect, separation or divorce, and several more categories. Our ACEs Score is the number of categories where we checked yes. Toxic stress from ACEs can actually affect our brains as we develop. This can have a lasting impact on tools like decision-making and learning. This can impact our adult lives with things like struggling with depression, jobs, and managing life in general. Fortunately, most of us have a low number of ACEs. On a bar chart, the tallest bar is those of us having zero ACEs. Those with one ACEs is a smaller group, two smaller still, and keep shrinking until very few of us in the general population have a score of eight adverse childhood experiences. The study in Washington State gave the ACEs Quiz to about 6,000 residents and added an additional question asking whether they had ever been homeless. As expected, overall, the respondents matched the results I've just decided, described. But when the subset of those who had ever experienced homelessness was examined, the results were completely the opposite, a mirror image. The largest bar of the homeless population was a score of eight adverse childhood experiences. This was followed with the seven bar, and grouping somewhat smaller and keeps shrinking until very few are in the zero category. My point, let's be careful before blaming the victims of childhood trauma. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you.
Clerk of the Board, do we have anybody else to sign up to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on from business for the public to the consent calendar this evening. We have the additional item, which is the grant amendment that's been added to the consent calendar. Do we have any comments, questions on the consent calendar? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Move and second to approve the consent calendar as amended. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the Commissioner reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
Well, thank you, sir. I've been missing events like work session with U-Haul, but it was for a good cause. I've mentioned to you before that Business Oregon operates a seismic rehabilitation grant advisory committee, which is a model of how to distribute according to engineer recommendations leavened by community input. And once again this year, Clatsop County saw a grant, NAPA School, almost $2.5 million to do seismic retrofitting. So, that's wonderful. The seismic retrofitting grants that came last year are still in use. Chief Daniels in Seaside got one, and he's trying to use that to not only replace the roof at the Seaside Fire Station, but to raise the roof so that he can have dormitories for firefighter housing there. So, there's really a lot of good that comes to community from that. The thing that happened last Thursday night and caused me to miss the Cedar Awards, which is always just so heartwarming and wonderful, a representative fam, who is a woman of, who represents southeast Portland, Powell Boulevard in particular, who is a, this is a complex professional term, she's a rock star for traffic safety. And she and I have been discussing our common concerns. I talked to her about the situation in Commissioner Bang's district with Highway 30 and that incredibly sad situation with a young woman being hit as she was crossing the highway in the dark. In District 5, we had one family that had three family members, a grandpa, a young one, just a little beyond a toddler, a head start kid, in a truck that was struck by a falling tree. Three family members died. A couple of months later, here's another traffic crash on Highway 101. The fourth member of that family, colleagues, I know that you're aware of it. I reached out to Rep. Fam and told her, she invited me to come and speak again to the Joint Committee on Transportation. So, there's a great streets program, which is to increase the safety of what they call orphan highways that are in cities, but they're ODOT highways. Well, how do we get some of that money for rural counties all over Oregon? So, I begged them to make the rural cousins part of the family. They seem to be responsive. I've been working with Commissioner Andreas from, oh gosh, Union County, and Commissioner Savas, I just get so emotional, I can't even talk or think, Commissioner Savas from Clackamas County, to see how we can collaborate all over Oregon to help ODOT be more effective in helping our local, our local road department and our ODOT crews just to deal with the carnage on the highway that is so catastrophic. You'll remember, we're still talking about how to get traffic safety commissions or committees in all of the counties that are part of the Northwest Act. We're still working on that because the function will be threefold. It will be to use the traffic safety committee to both gather information about local issues, educate local people about whatever pieces of education need to be put out there to be able to improve driver and pedestrian bike behavior. We also want to look at increased enforcement. Lieutenant Hazen Camp has indicated, from Oregon State Police, has indicated his interest, and the sheriff has indicated his interest. So, we're looking at gathering first education, then enforcement, then we go to the engineering because that's, that's often people's default position. Get the, get the engineers in here, they can fix this. Well, that isn't always the right answer. So, looking at having a comprehensive, long-term concerted activity in that regard, having an urban partner who is just such a wonderful legislator and so expert already, she came to us to Oregon from California, already expert on highway safety. And so, we, we have allies and relationships, and that's, that's where I was during the Cedar Awards. I wanted to go over just a little bit with you. AOC meets Thursday, sorry, Fridays virtually from 8:00 in the morning until about 3:00 in the afternoon on Friday. Then Monday, it's 8:00 in the morning until, well, it was almost 5:00. It was almost 5:00 o'clock on Friday. What we're doing is discussing issues of common concern, and even when we can't come to agreement, there was an issue about a gun control bill. What do we do about this? And there are very strong feelings. We were all touched when one of the commissioners that came out, as I said, as a, as a sexual assault survivor, who is looking at, at the confidence and the sense of security that a firearm provides. So, so that's food for thought. It's very personal. Even though we don't have the same point of view or the same strategies, we share each other's concerns. So, I have, I have a very thick packet. There was a wonderful report on water. This is on the AOC website. I have one hard copy here. I don't, I don't grab a bunch of them. Rep. Owens, who was a former county commissioner, and Rep. Helm from Beaverton are working together, a Republican and a Democrat, to really address water. And when we're looking at water, they're talking about planning, coordination, and capacity. They're talking about data and analysis. They're talking about waters for family, sorry, water for families, water for farms, water for fish, water projects, and outreach and engagement. So, this is the long-term comprehensive planning and coordination that needs to happen if we're going to deal with this essential human need. You don't need more things to read, but I want you to read it anyway. So, I think that's enough of my, well, just one more thing, one more thing, because I promised I would, I would do my duty as co-chair of the membership committee. We have two goals. We want to generate $200,000 in funds and expand the AOC Partner Program to reduce the dues burdens on counties. And we want to identify volunteers to attend evening county college dinner sessions at the AOC office. So, right now, we already have a projection of 138,750. There are some, there are some county commissioners who are very confident that they can go out and appeal to various businesses. I sent them to David Reed. I said, if there's anybody who can help gather up some community resources, David would be the one, so that we can help strengthen AOC in these, in these times of revenue pinches and, and program cuts. So, there's that. And if you're interested in attending one or all of the upcoming county college dinners to engage with new commissioners, judges, and chairs, please let Kristin Paul know, and she'll give you the dates and the invitation. So, it's a free dinner. It's better than a free lunch. And it's a chance to really to engage with people and build those relationships so we can help each other do, do our job well and serve our people in our places. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Again, we appreciate all the work that you're doing there with AOC. Commissioner Bangs?
Yeah, so I will start with April, or March 31st. So, a couple of our fellow counties in the CFTLC called a meeting or requested a meeting here almost two weeks ago, just to have, have a discussion, I think, is really what it boiled down to. I think that the Habitat Conservation Plan is, the results of the IPs have been startling across the state, would be my guess, and people are responding with concern. And so, they called an emergency session to just discuss talking points, to discuss how to engage, to discuss who should we talk to, and to try to problem solve other alternative talking points. And one of the, one of the two things I brought up was dialing in how much that this would actually cost the state legislators, legislators every two years if, if they were to fill a gap for our government funding, and identifying how many millions of dollars that that would be every biennium, and to really dial in and ask them, are they willing to want to even do that? And if they're not, then they need to say that they're not willing, so that that talking point can be taken off the table. And I think that this is, goes to show what occurred here to Clatsop County here most recently of not being part of the funding allocation for the houseless emergency declaration, and then being told that we just, she put out all of her funds already. And so, I guess we're just going to wait and see if by chance, funds are approved for us. And that tells me that I don't think that legislators, the governor or the legislators are going to want to make us whole in the millions of dollars shortfall that we will have in result of the HCP. And looking at the biennium budget for the Department of Forestry themselves, they just passed approval for 120 million for that department. And when you think about a 30% cut to that funding, to 40% cut to that funding, that's 30 to 40 million dollars just there in the department, not including the counties. And so, I, I brought up, let's dial in how much that that would cost every biennium, and start talking about that. And then, the other thing that we discussed was that the fishing industry has really focused on locally harvested, locally sourced, locally provided, and purchased. And the farming industry has focused on that for, for a decade or two, on locally grown, locally sourced, you know, and, and really propagated the positivity of that for environmental concerns. And especially in our housing crisis, I brought forth, hey, let's really consider as an industry focusing on locally grown, locally sourced, locally milled, locally provided. That way, we're not importing from places like Russia, we're not importing from China, we're not importing from other countries with more of a negative environmental impact, that we are using our locally sourced timber in a very environmentally positive atmosphere here in the United States. So, that was kind of the development of that conversation. I was happy to participate. Commissioner Thompson was there also, and it's nice to have concerted effort among the CFTLC counties realizing that this is not positive for moving forward as, as, you know, counties. It's our funding. The next meeting I had, it was not a liaison committee meeting, but it was with CDH, and just discussing pediatric mental health care in our community and how to improve access for our kids. My daughter has spurred that conversation at the state level, but also in me, and also in our local representatives, and it's one that I'll probably continue to pursue with her. Not probably, I'll continue to pursue with her. But asking some questions about what, what makes people in the mental health care actually choose that position for, for their life career, and how can we bring more of those people to the table? What carrots can we provide to those people as a small community, but also as a state, and then federally? My daughter, bless her heart, has reached out to Senator Merkley and Congresswoman Panamichi, and who knows where it's going to go, whether or not she'll get traction, but the messaging is there, and, and people are hearing, and it's just, it's nice. And so, I'll continue down that process, followed with a childcare task force meeting, another passion of our, of our commission, and I'm very impressed with our new manager? I don't know what we would.
I think she's, is she a program director or a program manager?
I think it might be a program coordinator.
Or, there we go. Or that.
She is gung ho, and everyone still has momentum, and very in tune to the promotion of improving our childcare access in our county. And so, there is plenty of forward motion continuing with that, and very fortunate that Dan Gaffney continues to pop in and, and provide guidance and leadership, even in his retirement. And then, we're working on the budget at Northwest Senior and Disability Services. Budgets are fun. And followed with just a fair board meeting here this, yesterday? Yes, yesterday. And discussing, sorry, I got distracted with what's happening right there. Just discussing the fair, and happy announcement, Sawyer Brown is going to be our concert. So, I don't know if you guys know Sawyer Brown?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's a pretty, pretty cool guy. Tickets will go on sale, I think I read, the 14th, and we'll be happily promoting that here via radio and flyers, and looking for sponsors and donors to help promote that. And so, things are coming together nicely at the fairgrounds and with our new fairboard manager, or not a fairboard manager, but our new fairground manager. And just excited to see what comes to fruition there and what's provided at fair. And so, yeah, that's the end of that.
Thank you. Good report. Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Commissioner Webb?
I'm not sure I can top those two. The most exciting thing that happened to me in the past couple of weeks was the Public Health Open House, which was a wonderful success. And it, it, I noticed we've gotten our, this wonderful, wonderful pamphlet. I, I particularly liked the fact that most of the staff was there, and they gave out, oh, I should have brought, brought it, they gave out tote bags, and there was an enormous amount of information available for people. And it was, it was a wonderful way to walk through our department and see how many services are offered, how many things that are free, everything from a vaccine to condoms to all kinds. I wish I could tell the story of the phone call I got when I got home, but I'm afraid I can't. The, it was just terrific, and the staff was there, and they were very energetic, and I'm, I'm very impressed with the fact that I asked our WIC coordinator, Norma Hernandez, a question that I guess I've been asking for the last couple of years, which was, I was very worried about the issue during COVID of, because it was an all-hands-on-deck response to COVID, what was happening with our other services during that time. And so, tonight, we all got a response to the fact that, that WIC didn't sleep during COVID. And so, she gave us this report of the incredible numbers that, that they kept up with. I was also really impressed in talking to, to several of the, of our staff about how intensive, even during COVID, their home visits were. And I think that, I think that home visits are one of the most, one of the most important ways that public health delivers their services, because it gets them into a home, and my daughter, who is a social worker, tells me this all the time, that, that the only way you can really treat a child is to go into their homes and see where they live, and to see what the environment is in their home. And, and so, it isn't, there were just so many of our services that, that were, that were completed in home visits that were formerly completed with, at the clinic with the door open. And it, it was really wonderful. I loved the response of people who, who were there. I loved the response of people who, who were there. It was very cool to hear, a lot, several of the people who were there who I talked to were actually our, they were the people who we serve. And, and they weren't even aware. I talked to one person who was, who was a WIC recipient and, and she said, oh, I didn't know that, I didn't know these guys did all these other things. So it was one, it was just wonderful. And if you ever get a chance to go to the, what's it called? The van, the, what's it called? The van. It is one cool enterprise. I mean, it is, it has, it has an exam room in the, in the van with every, with everything that you would ever see in a medical examination room. We just, it has its own restroom. It, it just, and, and the idea of this, of what we can do in our county with our dispersed population with this van is just a killer. I mean, it would be so wonderful to have this van on the road just all the time, absolutely all the time. And so it was great. It was just, it was really a wonderful event. So hallelujah and congratulations. It, it was just wonderful. My other recent liaison was, was with the, with the ambulance services group. And this is a group that I think I'm, I'm gonna make more noise about. I think that, that we need this group, I think we need to be helping this group. We have our new, having, having our new emergency manager is such a wonderful addition to this group. They're talking about issues that are far broader than response times, although response times are very important. But I think I have a, I think I have a, I have a solution for the response times that the county can help with. We need to redraw their zones. Their zones are absurd. They make absolutely no sense for a county that has, what, four highways in it. And so, so I hope to be a little bit more supportive in the future with that group because it's a wonderful group because it includes such a wonderful diversity of people and from different, from, I think any time that you can get the EMT guys and the fire guys in a room together from across the county, you really get a feel for, for what the challenges are for delivering services in this county. And it's a, it's a wonderfully robust group and so you're gonna be hearing more from me about them. I hope to, that I'll give you great information about how we can help them.
No, no. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Appreciate that. And yes, they are amazing volunteers that we have in our community and all of all.
Isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
It just astounds me.
It is.
And especially when I hear, I'm sorry, you shouldn't have said that because now you're gonna make me talk some more. The, the, listening to the fire chiefs and, and the ambulance folks talking about the problem that they have getting volunteers and how some of their solutions, one of which Commissioner Thompson made, this is like the second facility now where, where we have a fire department who wants to provide housing. And it's one of the most wonderful things we can provide for, for our volunteers who are often young and, you know, and, and work crazy hours, et cetera. So I, I, I really think there's a, there's, there's great benefit for us, I think, to hear these people and to what they have to say. So I, I promise you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be that speaker for those people. I'm gonna try to drive you crazy.
Oh, that's great. No, thank you, Commissioner Webb. Appreciate that. Commissioner Toyc?
Thank you. Well, Cedar Awards, a great event. It was, you know, really neat to see the diversity of businesses, of people, but it all comes to a common core that they take care of each other in these businesses and they take care of their customers. It's all, you take care of everybody internally and the internally takes care of externally, that's a success formula. And that was the common thread between all the winners. It was really neat to see that, you know, and, and the appreciation of the winners was amazing. I mean, they're truly heartfelt appreciation that they were receiving these awards, that they were recognized. And then the overall, the biggest one I feel is the Skip Halke Award. All of us knew Skip, you know, kind of a anchor of, of this community. He represents many, many things, not just, you know, I was in Rotary with Skip, I was, we, I'd known Skip, went to his grocery store as a young child, you know? So he did so many things for the community and so many selfless things that to receive that award, then Senator, former Senator Betsy Johnson won and she was actually crying in tears because of how heartfelt and how honored she was. And this is a person who just gets awards and tokens all the time and how impactful and how meaningful that Skip Halke Award was. So really appreciate what Cedar's doing and, you know, really appreciate and thank all the winners that were there. Human Services Advisory Committee, great discussions there, you know, and we always talk about different things. We, you know, homelessness is always a topical, so I appreciate your discussion this evening. And like you, you brought out, there's, you know, there are factors. And I went to another Veterans Meeting and I said, you know, we don't, we kind of misidentify things. We don't, we don't have a true homeless issue. We have root causes, you know, we have substance abuse, we have mental health, we've got all these other issues that result in homelessness. So until we recognize all these other issues and take care of those, we will, we will never kind of, we'll be chasing that homeless issue because we don't address the root causes. So I appreciate the, the discussion about the adverse childhood experiences, yet another, yet another root cause towards homeless. So, you know, when they talk about, you know, universal income for homeless and all this, that's just throwing Band-Aids and money at issues without actually looking at the root causes and we need to focus on, you know, the substance abuse, the mental health, the childhood issues. Address those and then it will help resolve the homeless issue. Other topic brought up there was, you know, Measure 110, we decriminalized drugs. Well, that increased homelessness 27% right away. So that kind of further emphasized that, yes, we have substance abuse and mental health issues that that just kind of amplified. So continued discussion on that, but I think as we can try to keep drawing towards the causes, work with Director Amy Baker and, you know, help facilitate, you know, let's keep focusing on those root causes that will help to, you know, minimize or help, you know, reduce the number of homeless instead of just focusing on the end result and trying to contain that, you know, I think we'll have more success. Last one, it's not, it's probably controversial, but, you know, the gun control bill that's out there right now, stay long. Another Veterans Grupo is that the opposition is not necessarily, and I don't care what fence you sit on, on the control issue, the measure that they're drafting, the, and like we can look at our county council to help us on this one, but the, the hazard is that they're trying to limit the venue where you can appeal. So they're stacking the court. So they want to find a friendly, you know, venue to a politicized issue that you can only go to, to appeal these issues. They're trying to direct it that way. And that's the hazard of this, the measure, the gun control bill they're trying to push in right now. So again, I don't, you know, you can have your feelings one way or the other on the gun control, but I think that how it's written and how, what they're trying to propose is more dangerous because that could set a precedent for future. But hopefully the county council could help look at that for us and if that's truly what they're gaming in that, maybe as a county, we can oppose that because I hate to see that precedent set for any issue in the state and in our county.
Yeah, thank you very much, Commissioner Toyc. Appreciate your thoughts. And as far as the homeless funding, yes, of course, we were disappointed that we didn't receive any of this first go around. County Manager can talk a little bit more about what, what we are kind of looking towards maybe later this summer.
Chair Quila, members of the board, wasn't overly surprised that we weren't included in the first tranche because the first 11 counties were the focus of the, of the initial efforts and the set asides that were previously announced. But what we do here is that there'll be a second set aside for those counties that were added to the emergency order, but we won't know and the funding won't be coming until what they think is July timeframe. And part of that, I believe, is because there needs to be some legislative action to actually identify the source and the amount of those funds. So more to come on that.
Yeah, thank you, County Manager. And Kristin Freund is the Childcare Retention and Expansion Program Coordinator. And Teresa, we do have her coming to a meeting, is it our next meeting that she's gonna be introduced? I'm trying to remember exactly when we scheduled her.
Yeah, I think it's, Chair Quila, I think it's, it is April 19th and she'll be coming in at the beginning of the meeting before we go into the strategic plan discussion. Right now, I was scheduled for a brief county manager update, so instead, we're gonna have her come in and do introductions with the board.
Okay. So you all get an opportunity to meet her and yes, as Commissioner Banks was speaking to, I think she's gonna be a really good leader for the group and, and keep things progressing forward. As far as NOAA is concerned, as we were talking earlier about the Owens Dare Two, the, what am I saying? Denial of the, what am I trying to say?
The denial of, of the appeal?
Of the appeal? What am I, yeah, the denial of the appeal to place it at the last meeting, which was from the historically enmarc'd commission decision, which is good news for the, the project, which is gonna be 50 units dedicated to low-income senior housing and for people with disabilities. So that's, that's a good development and glad to see that progressing. As you know, and many have read, that the executive director and NOAA are parting ways. And we took that opportunity to kind of review what our ARPA funding is in the future and we did serve notice to the, to the NOAA interim manager, which is Jim Evans, to let him know that we are gonna be withdrawing, pulling that funding and, and seeing if we can redirect it into some other efforts that can help build housing. We have some initiatives that have already been started here in Clatso County, want to see those go forward. Want to make sure that what we're doing is focused on Clatso County. And I think in this transition for NOAA, it's probably the best time to do that. They, this was directed at staffing and capacity issues for them and that staff now has gone away. So now this is opportunity for us to kind of address that ourselves. And other than that, I don't think I have anything else to report out. Commissioner Banks?
I did have one more comment, just in regards to the Cedar event that you brought up. The Astoria, the Department of Forestry, the Astoria District was honored during the Cedar event that night. And I will have to say, being in the position that I am in and the position then that my husband is in at ODF has made this HCP, the Habitat Conservation Plan discussion very difficult for me. Because when I have these conversations with folks, these are folks that I've known for my marriage, you know, going on 15 years, these are people that I respect. And it is a very, it was a very heartfelt moment to watch that group of folks get honored for all of the wonderful work that they have currently been doing. And I feel like that that gets lost in the conversation and so I, you know, I am constantly conversing on the Habitat Conservation Plan, but I don't want to ever give the illusion that I don't appreciate the Astoria District and all of the people that work there because they have my respect and they have my, they just, they're great people and they're doing a great job with the tools that they have at their disposal.
Yeah. No, thank you, Commissioner Banks. I agree. I'll, I'll add to it since we're trying to make this the longest Commissioner report out. I think that it's an uplifting event, the Cedar Awards, that everybody was so thrilled. And the El Horacio Restaurant, they received a reward for family business and they closed down and everybody that works there was up on stage and they were emotional and pleased. And so it's just, it is something that you just get really, you feel really good about seeing the, the pride from so many of the, of the smaller businesses especially that are getting recognized probably for the first time and something like that. So it's pretty cool, yeah, neat to see.
Mr. Quila?
Mr. Tough, yeah, let's keep it going.
Well, heck yeah, because we're having such a good time. Well, so one of the, one of the things that happens when we rural counties go into a state venue, having come from a metropolitan county, I've, you know, I've been in Detroit and I've been in Portland, I've been in Anchorage, I know what metropolitan means, but now out here in rural, somehow there's the idea that we're not as smart, we're not as well-educated, we're probably bigoted and we really don't respect BIPOC folks, people of color, Black, Indigenous, people of color, which is just astonishing to me. So when I went to the, to the last event up at the community college, come to this, I would have been there, you know, I would have. It's the same thing. We are a community that sees each other and that honors our BIPOC community. So I hope that, I hope that fact gets publicized. We can't make that happen, but if we keep saying it loud enough and long enough, I think there may be a way to highlight that because it's a pernicious lie and we shouldn't let it stand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Okay, we're gonna conclude and we're gonna go to the County Manager. We'll see how much time County Manager takes.
Chair Quila, members of the board, that's a dangerous thing. I'll be relatively quick. I just wanted to share on the NOAA front that we are looking at various options to, to have some capacity to provide some of that technical assistance and planning that the community needs regarding affordable housing. That's what we were getting through the investment with NOAA and the staff that they hired. And so we're looking at that, but we're looking at various options. It could be temporary staff, it could be some contracting assistance. And so we don't have a clear picture of what that's gonna be and it'll probably take us a little time because there's just a lot of transition that has been thrust upon us with not a lot of, a lot of warning. So, so we'll take our time and come back to your board and have that conversation. The other is that, piggybacking off of Commissioner Webb's comments about the ambulance advisory committee, I have been asked to come and talk to the Fire Defense Board in May. And so I'll be meeting with them. They've come up with a long list of things that they would like to engage me on. And so, so we'll be talking and starting some of those conversations. As we know, there's a lot of concerns and they start with certainly volunteers, but also the, the financial structure of these rural fire districts. There's issues with, with ambulance, you know, response. There's also issues with consolidated 911 or questions about consolidated 911. So there's, there's a lot of topics that I think the county can, can engage with the Fire Defense Board on. So we'll start those conversations in May. So, and that's all that I have.
Thank you, County Manager. Any questions for County Manager? Okay, we'll go ahead and start the public hearing, our portion of the agenda here with Julia Decker, our Planning Manager, Mrs. Ordnance 23-01, Law Duck Revisions Trucking Terminal and Rural Community Commercial RCC Zone on page 165 of our agenda.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Quila. I'm Julia Decker, Planning Manager, Community Development, and I will try to be really brief because I, I think I can be. This is amendments to, at the definition of trucking terminal to the Land and Water Development and Use Code, Section 1.0500 definitions, and as a type 2 conditional use in the Rural Community Commercial Zone, Section 4.1430. The Planning Commission heard the matter on February 12th after reviewing it in a work session on January 10th. And on January 18th, your board reviewed it in a work session and heard the Planning Commission's recommendation to go ahead with these amendments. And your board proposed the amendments and supported that and directed staff to proceed. So we have done that. We have notified the Department of Land Conservation and Development, we have advertised it, we have received no comments whatsoever on page, oh, let's see here. Um, on, uh, page, oh, let's see here. The draft ordinance is on page 170 and 171 of your packet. The draft definition is on page 173. And the draft changes to Section 4.1430, the conditional use section of the RCC zone, starts on page 174. So you have the language, you have the ordinance. I'm here to answer any questions you might have, um, and to ask you to, um, open your hearing and continue the matter until April 26th for a second reading.
Okay. Thank you, Julia. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Well, being a commissioner and not a staff, um, I have heard from somebody who was chewing on my ear, well, you know, why not? What did somebody say? Oh, pick up the phone and call her, she'll talk to you, she'll listen to you. So you, sure, forest laws makes it easier. Uh, someone said, "What happens if there is someone operating a trucking terminal that's close to a residence and, um, the operator of the trucking terminal wants to run those diesel engines to, um, warm them up or whatever, starting at 2:45 in the morning for hours and hours and hours?" Do we, I don't see anything about that in here and I didn't really have a good answer. Do you, can you help me?
I can, I can try to help you with that. The standards for the conditional use permit is a different section of code. And so when someone makes an application for a conditional use permit, that section of code is applied as well. And that includes hours of operation and all kinds of things, noise, glare.
Noise, yeah.
All, all the good stuff. Um, the other thing is, is the RCC zone, it does have some residential uses in it. There are people mostly who, um, are living in dwellings that have been there longer than the RCC zone. So they are grandfathered in, to use an expression that a lot of people do use. Uh, so, but it's not actually a residential zone. It's, it's a commercial zone and there tends to be some kind of light industrial use around it. So it's not truly a residential zone. But if somebody is making an application, one of the things that staff looks at is the whole rest of the use in the, in the neighborhood. And that includes any residential uses that might be grandfathered in. And that's taken into account. And of course, as a type-two use, there's going to be a public notice. And if there is, for some reason, uh, public cry-out, um, you know, concern, the director has the ability to raise that to a type-two A, which would be a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission, um, and, and it's appealable. So along the way, there are all of these checks and balances and staff has the ability to try and come up with reasonable conditions of approval that would mitigate any negative impact on the community. And that includes neighbors.
Ms. Thompson?
Well, that's very reassuring. Um, since you're on a roll, um, if, if the permit is granted, the use is permitted, but then during the operation of it, there begin to be problems that develop, is that, I almost hate to use, is, does that become a complaint process?
It does become a complaint process. And, um, so if somebody is not following the, um, conditions that are set out as part of their conditional use permit, their conditional use permit can be revoked. Um, all we, we need to do really is hear the complaint, we set it over to code compliance and the procedure begins. Um, we haven't really had a lot of those kinds of complaints. The types of complaints we get tend to be more, um, based on different types of home businesses. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, before we public, before we open the public hearing, um, can we have the first reading by title only? County Council?
This is Ordnance Number 23-01, in the matter of, an ordinance amending the Land and Water Development and Use Code, Law Duck, adding a definition of trucking terminal and adding trucking terminals as a conditional use in the RCC zone.
Okay, thank you, County Council. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordnance Number 23-01. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest to report?
No.
Nope, not seeing any. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public signed up to speak remotely?
Chair Quila, no.
All right. Has anyone signed up to speak in person?
No, they're not.
Okay. We don't have anyone that's here to speak on Ordnance 23-01. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And then we will need a motion and the suggested motion is to continue the matter to April 26, 2023.
I move to continue the matter to April 26, 2023.
Second. Movement seconded to continue the matter to April 26, 2023. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
And that being the last item on our agenda, do we have anything for the good of the order? I almost shudder thinking, I shouldn't have said that.
You know, we wanted a long one tonight, I guess. I don't know.
No, we still got it by seven. Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, Chair Quila.
That's a juicy.
Thank you.